Meeting to order at 7:01 PM. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pleasure of the meeting.
The United States of America into which it stands, one nation under universal liberty, justice.
Roll call this evening, Mr. Neal.
Here.
Brock, I am present. Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
I are here.
I are here.
Mr. McBride?
Here.
Mr. Rosetti?
Here.
Mr. Ravitch?
Here.
Mr. Furman is absent this evening. If I could ask all of you gentlemen to review the minutes from our last meeting, look for any corrections. I know they are tad light.
I did catch one. Second paragraph. Says. Going to approve, should be going to approve the minutes for the.
This would be for case, are McBride? Yes. Yes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes unless there are any final corrections, comments.
Like 23, 22.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Absane.
Mr. Neal? I will vote aye, official with a quorum. Right, that leads us to new business. Mr. Ray, could you elucidate us on our lengthy agenda this evening?
Absolutely. So there are essentially three items in front of you. Is, did Mr. Ken Franzese make it?
Yep, I'm here.
He did.
Okay, I just see you're running a little late. So the first section of items, if you will, under the Hampshire 90 Logistics Park are all related to the same project. The first three items are variances that came about from the first plan review that were requested by the project developers. And, you know, essentially they are modifications to the sidewalks, the right-of-way width, and cul-de-sac length. These are requirements in the subdivision regulations. So while they're not your typical zoning regulations, they do still fall within this commission's purview. After consulting with the street supervisor, the village engineering firm, as well as Chief Herman from the fire district, staff has no concerns about these three requests for variance. So we leave it to the commission for discussion. And then also before you is a public hearing and subsequent recommendation for approval of a final plat of subdivision. I spoke with the village engineer today and he said that his initial review is that the plans are within substantial compliance. So they are, the only outstanding issues are minor things, you know, often notational. So nothing, nothing substantial left to fix. That said, the developers will have to have a clean engineering review before this goes to the village board. So staff will just ask that if you decide to recommend approval, you do so conditional upon a final engineering approval as well. And I'm happy to answer any other questions. And Mr. Franzese is here to, to explain the project as well.
Want to possibly call you, tell your first name, Ken?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So what's most helpful for you guys? Do you want me to walk through each of the three items and give you kind of our thoughts and explanation on it? Or?
Sure, if you can be so kind, sure.
Okay, so the first, I guess this is no order or priority, but the first is the variance for the length of the cul-de-sac. So we had to get marketable properties. So the furthest easternmost site is, Jason, how, a little over 22 acres. And so if we go any bigger than that, there are no users that need a 25 or 30 acre site. So we needed to push that. As I understand it, the majority of the concern for the longer cul-de-sac relates to a residential environment where you've got a lot of driveways. There's no place to push the snow. So what we're doing is in the cul-de-sac, there's no center island to worry about snowplow trucks hitting or whatever. But there's, there will be also plenty for them to just do the blade angle and push that snow onto the grass without all the driveways. So, but there, we just needed to get to a point where we could have marketable site sizes. So that, that's the reason for that requested variance. Any questions or comments related to that? No, okay.
Mr. Rosetti, Mr. Ravitch, any questions on that, thus far?
I have no questions.
Okay, so the second is the width of the right-of-way. So as I understand it, typically it's an 80-foot right-of-way. We're actually providing 91 feet. And so it's usually done via a public right-of-way. The way, what we're doing is what we hopefully created here is a win-win. So we are doing a portion of it as the public right-of-way. So the street is just as wide as it should be. And then the utilities will go with 30 feet. And then the balance of it will be dedicated for utilities. But the way that we're proposing to do that is with a utility easement. So the same amount of land area will be dedicated, but what enables us to do as the developer is sell that land to a user. And then they can count that grass area as part of their green space requirements. So we were able to sell it and at the same time, the village no longer has to maintain it. But, but you have, you're actually, instead of the 80 feet that you typically get, we're actually providing a total of 91 feet. So all of the utilities, everything that should be in there is in there. But that's the purpose for that. Any questions from anyone?
Not for me.
Nope. Okay, got it. And then the third relates to the proposed sidewalks on one side of the road instead of both sides of the road. So what we're envisioning here is going to be four users tops. These will be trucking companies. So we don't think anyone's necessarily going to be riding bicycles to work or whatnot. But also there's, most of their employee count is out on the road and gone. So there will be people in the offices for sure. But the thought is that the single sidewalk will be more than sufficient for the anticipated pedestrian traffic. People want to go out, take walks on lunch or anything like that. So we're doing that. I think similarly, it was done, I'm not sure how it got approved or the rationale there, but I think it was done on the west side of Route 20, off of where northern builders extended their roadways. And so, you know, the idea too is when you put in sidewalks, you know, we know it, they go in, they're, they're expensive. So it's saving us money on the front end, but it's also saving the village money on the back end in terms of longer term maintenance. So the idea was just to say, if we don't really need it, then let's not build it. And it's really as simple as that.
Now, was the preference the right or the left side of the street?
North side.
The north side of the. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, any thoughts or questions on that one?
Mr. Rosetti, Mr. Ravitch, any questions?
I'm good, Brian.
Let the record show that Mr. Ravitch actually gave the okay sign. All right.
You bet. Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to initiate a public hearing on final plat of subdivision for the Hampshire 90 Logistics Park.
I will make said motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Again, just to clarify, we don't have any members of the public wishing to speak during this public hearing. I will then entertain a motion to close our public hearing. Final plat. In motion again. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Public hearing is closed. All right. So since we get tripped up on this, would you gentlemen like to discuss the delivery first? Or would you entertain the motion, then delivery and discuss?
Either way, slide me. We're going to do them individually, obviously, because we have to make a motion for each one. Or can we do them as a bundle?
I think we can do them all as a bundle since we can at least make that motion as long as there are no objections, comments, or complaints. We should be able to bundle them all together.
Yeah, the first three are okay. The last one we have, we have to add with the final conclusion of engineering.
Any questions, comments, any deliberation requests from Mr. McBri- Ravitch or Rosetti on agenda items A, B, C, 1, 2, 3?
I have no questions, Brian.
No, sir.
Then I will entertain a motion to recommend the approval of the final plat of subdivision for the Hampshire 90 Logistics Park agenda items I, double I, and triple I as a quote-unquote bundled.
I'll make said motion.
Sir. Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Josh, I think you and I might have to sit down and figure out what the quote-unquote legalese is for bundling agenda items.
I think Robert's Rules of Order probably have us do it a little differently, but none of these are official ordinances or resolutions. So it's not the end of the world.
Okay. So we'll yell at each other later. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We already did the public hearing. There was no public comment regarding the B, C, and items.
1, 2, 3, and 4, but we left 5, we left 5 go because of the engineering. We put that separate.
Yeah, we haven't made a motion to recommend approval.
That was.
We didn't recommend approval of variance. We should have been two words. One should have been the right amount of approval of the variances, 1, 2, and 3, and then 5, we should have the second, 4.
I was taking, I was taking the motion as it was written, conditional upon final engineering.
Yeah, I think that's just.
Okay. It's kind of coming off on the. Motion anyway. All right, item B, Josh, any background on this one?
Sure. Let me just flip to my page there. So the property owners at 148 Washington submitted an application for rezoning and variance for an accessory building. The proper public notices for the public hearing were posted in the Daily Herald on the property and sent to the neighbors. So I can confirm that just for the record. Essentially, I believe they're here tonight. Is that correct? Kelly, are you there?
Yes, hi.
Yes.
So essentially, from what we understand, they would like to first have a contractor or construction office in the house-looking commercial building on the front of the property. And to do that, they need the rezoning from B1 to B3. And then the accessory building is accessory to that use. So it'll be a storage shop for that business. In addition to that, they plan to use the property for other commercial office space that they would rent out on the bottom floor. And then the upper floor is currently being used as a residence. So the fact that it's being used as a residence is what kicks in the different types of setbacks than normal, which is then why they need the variance to the setback requirements this evening. I, I could, is there any questions about either of those things?
Not for me.
Josh, how was the, how was the first floor of 148 Washington Street previously used? Do we know?
I don't. The owners might.
It's been used multiple different ways. It's been a pizza place. It's been a business. It's been residential rental and a lot of things from my understanding prior to us owning it.
Any additional questions or comments? Larry, Bill?
I'm good.
I will entertain a motion to enter a public hearing regarding Mr. Rose's rezoning and variance at 148 Washington.
I'll second.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
And Mr. Neal? And to the best of my knowledge, we have no public speakers, public comments on this particular item. I will entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
I'll second.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm pretty sure it's motion and discussion.
Which motion, second. Discuss.
Great. Discuss.
I will entertain a motion to recommend approval of rezoning from B1 Central Business District to B3 Service Business District at 148 Washington Avenue.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I will second.
Mr. Neal?
Do I discuss this one? Do I do it individually? Motion, second, discuss. Discussion.
Any discussion, Mr. Neal?
No, sir.
Any other questions or comments, deliberation, discussion, Mr. Rosetti, Mr. Ravitch?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
What, my understanding was it's a 10-foot setback for residential, 5-foot setback for B1 or B3. But because this business has an upstairs apartment or something residential, now it falls under the 10-foot. Are their buildings currently infringing on that setback? Or they just want to build that new, that new building, that accessory building?
My understanding is that there's no other buildings encroaching. It's just for the new one. And, you know, one good reason from the application was that, or I guess maybe our discussions with the owners, is that abutting that property on that eastern side is just a parking lot, it's the public parking lot rather than another residence or something like that. So, you know, one could make the argument that the setbacks need to be, or do not need to be as far.
And this, this is for the next agenda item, correct?
We are two. Yeah, we're on two now. They jumped to three.
Because we're on agenda item B2 at the moment.
Zoning?
Yep.
Okay.
No further.
Nothing, nothing on number two.
No filibuster?
That was it.
Roll call, Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item B3, a motion to recommend the approval of a variance to the 10-foot side yard setback to allow an accessory building no less than five feet from the side lot line at 148 Washington Avenue. Motion, I will entertain.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Since I think we already kind of went over the 10-foot, 5-foot side back setback.
Can we discuss what the neighboring properties again? Let's go over that one more time. Mr. Ray?
Sir. So, property that this setback would abut to the east is the public parking lot next to the post office. So, you know, traditionally setbacks are for aesthetic purposes and also so that people are not doing things right on top of each other in their residences and their businesses, seeing as how it's just a parking lot right next door. One could make the argument that the setback does not need to be as much. So that's just a potential consideration for the commission.
This is only a variance to the eastern setback, not the western setback according to the drawings.
That's correct. I did not specify that on the agenda, but if you would like to, you absolutely can.
Yeah, I mean, agenda supplement, it actually does state that the neighboring property on the east side is a public parking.
Yeah, you have to look at the drawings. So it's, it's more. Right.
But if we recommend a variance, would it be specific or does that give carte blanche for all four?
If you'd like it to be specific, I would include it in your motion.
So the property, this is a setback only due to the rear of the property and on that eastern side.
Right.
The setback anyways.
Right, that, well, actually, it would be all east, west, and the north side backed up to the tracks.
But that's already, from my understanding, that's already okay because the other building is backed up to that.
Right. I'm just, so from the drawings, we have the floor, the scale drawings. It's got, it's got the five foot from this eastern side, which is the parking lot here.
Right.
It's got the five foot here on the rear of the property, but it doesn't look like on this west side.
You can answer that.
The west side, we want to go five foot off.
If possible.
If possible.
Okay, so that's not, okay, so.
That's a good question.
Yep, that's.
What is on the, what is it, neighboring property to the west?
The west side is already an Angel Bass and Rescue.
And then there's nothing that far back in the rear.
Offense.
Well, as far as structures.
Yeah. Shark turn.
Just the easement for the rear.
Right. Okay.
So we would have to reword this in our motion and vote stipulates.
Josh, was the variance, it would include the rear yard as well, correct?
There is no need for a variance for the rear yard. It's already allowed to be in the rear yard.
Because of the railway.
Uh, no, just because of the. Accessory building allowed to be in the rear yard of a business or residential property. So there's no need for a variance.
Absolutely.
Is there any value to wording this to include the five yard, the five-foot setback in the variance for the rear half of the property? Does that satisfy your request? But is Josh, is there anything that you can think of that would add value if it were to be worded that way? Instead of adding a variance for the entire property?
So your variance, or your motion might be to recommend approval of a variance to the side yard setback requirements at 148 Washington for the rear half of the side yards. Is that what your?
Rear half of the property.
Half of the property. That, you could make that motion. And that would, that would restrict the building to, or the, yes, that would make it such that the front half of the property would have to remain 10-foot. And the rear half could be five foot on both sides.
And the other, the only other reason I bring that up is the existing building, I believe, is actually already kind of grandfathered in.
Yes, correct.
They're almost attached, aren't they?
Pretty close.
Yeah.
All right.
With that proposed motion, Josh, if, it appears as though the new driveway for this accessory building is going to be in the front of the property within that same five foot. So that motion, it just needs to be a side yard setback. Because if you look here on the.
I don't think, I don't, does that apply to driveways or?
It just don't, okay.
Yeah, correct. Driveways, you are allowed to have a driveway in your side yard.
Okay. So it's just for accessory structure.
Technically, our original motion failed. I will entertain an amended motion to recommend the approval of a variance to the 10-foot side yard setback to allow an accessory building no less than five feet from the east and west side lot lines in the rear half of the property at 148 Washington Avenue. Do I have a motion?
I will make an amended motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments on that amended motion, gentlemen, remote?
I'm good.
We're good.
Roll call, Mr. Ravitch?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Motion you seconded.
Yeah.
And Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Oh, thank you.
Folks are all set. You don't have to stay here.
Hang out with us if you want.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh, and everybody.
And agenda item C, Mr. Josh, if we could lean on you yet again as usual?
Absolutely. So the Road Ranger was, just a little bit of background, Road Ranger was originally constructed before it was annexed to the village. So signage since annexing has technically been out of regulation. But since it was grandfathered, it was fine. Now that they would like to change the signage a bit, update it, rebrand it a little bit. They do need to bring it to code. However, they do have several additional users inside Road Ranger, as I'm sure you're all aware. There's a subway inside and a pizza, Dave's Famous Pizza. So they would like to retain some of that extra signage that might be atypical from a standard gas station. So they have submitted a signed package that would include additional signage that allowed. Normally, they would only be allowed one wall sign per elevation. And they would like three signs on the west side, four signs on the east side. And they would like to exceed the allowable square footage on the west side by approximately 82 feet, square feet. So for your consideration, staff did not make any kind of recommendation. So for any other questions you might have, I'll try to answer.
Now, we didn't, we not separate the truck stop several years ago from the village on the ordinances for the signs, correct?
There's what's called overlay district, which allows for a little bit different signage. Essentially, it was to allow for the, they're called the highway identification signs, which are the very large, you know, 100-foot tall ones. It allowed for a little bit bigger signs, but it's not a totally different district. So they would still need these variances. they would still need these variances tonight.
Okay, thank you.
The current regulations restrict the square footage of one wall sign, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it'd be a pretty big sign, a hundred and twenty feet.
Well, they're requesting three separate wall signs?
Yeah, three separate wall signs on the west side and four separate signs on the east elevation.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the problems we had previously was consistency, particularly when it came to the truck stop. Because no matter what kind of a sign you want to put up, I want to put up a different one. Road Ranger was one. Speedway, Super Mix, I mean, everybody had different ideas of what they wanted over there. So that's what I might concern is that we're consistent with what we do.
As far as consistency with other truck stops up there, I don't. So, for example, the TA does have a Burger King there, is it a Burger King? I think so. And a Popeyes?
Yes.
They have additional signage there as well, I didn't take any measurements.
Okay. Hang on.
Loves came in when they first built
a whole sign package. They all had, they all had different ideas of what they would like for signs, as I recall.
Yeah, I mean, that's largely true, they all have different types of inside users that they want to be able to showcase to the, you know, passersby, and they have different layouts on their properties facing different directions, so.
My concern is that we, if we go in and recommend an approval, in this case, then somebody doesn't come back and say, well, last year I wanted that, and you told us no.
And with, to speak to Hank's concern, is, it sounded like him, I do, I worry about starting an arms race of signage between the folks competing there in that area.
Yes.
I can't remember, what signage does Loves have? Do they have a separate sign on their building for Arby's? Does anybody know?
I don't remember.
I don't remember either. I think whatever we did for Loves, because that was probably the most recent which is our benchmark.
Like Speedway, even McDonald's, they wanted their arch to be higher than what it is, and it just goes on forever, but as long as everybody's happy, I don't care, personally, but, you know, I think we need to be consistent on what we do.
Yeah, since I've been here in the last two years, the only requests for additional signage, I believe, were for the taller highway identi, taller and larger highway identification signs, which is not a part of this request.
Okay. I mean, we've already identified that that's a separate area over there, different from the village, so.
Josh, what was the issue? Last year, didn't we approve a change to the to the truck stop for a specific sign set, because we were dealing with everyone coming in asking for these variants? Are we talking the same thing?
Go with the signs on the sticks.
Yeah.
Those were the highway.
Yeah, signs on the stick, that was good.
Right.
Zoning Board of Appeals and Plant Commission wanted to be consistent and just decided to change the regulation to allow for those.
Right, because everyone was having this sort of variance. They did their stick signs.
Yeah, half of our, half of our work was signs between the village and the truck stop and whatever.
I mean, in this instance, my opinion, gentlemen, is these are, the amenities that you're offering to the establishment should be only advertised. Then, I just, I mean, could we have a singular sign with not more than a hundred and twenty square feet? I'm sure they could. Right, I mean, I'm sure they could.
Picking up what you're putting down there, Mr. Neal, and I would be inclined to agree with you. If and again, I'm just throwing this out there for discussion. The current regulation permit one sign of not more than a hundred and twenty feet. Myself, I would be inclined to entertain discussion. Could we, should we modify the regulation, be more forward-thinking, to allow for one wall sign of not more than a hundred and twenty square feet per tenant in that building? So if there was a business entity looking for advertising space, in this case, Road Ranger, Subway, and A, B, C, D, I think that would be, we could still maintain a little bit of discretionary signage regulation and allow for individual business tenants to advertise.
I mean, in all fairness, Road Ranger is probably one of the early, earlier tenants over there. So probably they're the ones that are first behind on the sign sizes, I would think.
I would, I would be in favor of that, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure how we would be able to get that ordinance change, very likely upcoming agenda for us to do an ordinance change, but I would be opposed to that, allowing one sign per tenant, I mean, in this, it's a pizza place, it's Subway, and then obviously, Road Ranger is taking up probably the majority of the variance, two hundred and two feet, if you look at the west side, Road Ranger, their logo is taking up the most of the stuff. But again, I wouldn't be opposed to, you know, if there's a Subway, a Pizza, or an Arby's, they should each be able to have some discretionary advertising.
Mr. Commissioner, I'm in agreement with Mr. Neal. And I looked up on Google, Loves does have an Arby's sign on their building. And as Mr. Neal said, I believe that the business that's there should be able to put a sign up to let people know that they are there.
Correct.
I think that's absolutely an ordinance that could be considered. I think there's some details that would need to be worked out, such as what defines a tenant, you know, there, for example, this request is asking for seven-seven-seven gambling sign, or video gaming sign, not sure that, and it so I would just ask that the commission consider the request tonight, and then if you would all like, we can look into an ordinance change for a future meeting.
I thought to ask how we might go about doing that, if we approve this variance, and then obviously, forward-thinking, immediately push it through the request, a little bit more of a forward-thinking and all-encompassing.
I would think there would have to be, that would be in regards to like a business operation, not, not our operation license, but they'd be a separate business entity, you know, you would have to have that information, so like, if the seven-seven-seven gaming is part of Road Ranger, it wouldn't fit in that category to be that separate. What if seven-seven-seven is its own entity that is working out of the Road Ranger, then they would duly qualify.
Correct.
Mr. Ray, any idea, is there a timeframe that they would like to do this, or is it just in that development stages at this point?
Is there a representative there tonight, Todd, maybe?
There is no else here this evening.
I thought he might be joining online, but I suppose not. I don't, I don't know if there's any kind of hurry, they did put up their Road Ranger signs, which is allowable, you know, just the single sign on either elevation. And then they were just waiting for the approval to put up the rest of the signs. And they've been working through this for a while and didn't seem to be in a rush, I don't want to speak for them, but if you would rather, you know, if the commission would rather table this indefinitely and have staff come back at your next meeting with an ordinance change, then you can, you can request that.
I think we can, if we're moving this direction, gentlemen, and we are going to pursue this, I think tonight, we we vote on the motion for this variance to allow the folks at Road Ranger to do their work, I mean, looking at their renderings, I'm not opposed to what they have.
It's not anything routine.
It's great, I'm not opposed to what they have, and we could, we could grant them their variance, really, vote on it tonight, and then before we think, you know, use this as an example if we move forward to possibly.
As a planning and zoning commission, what you're saying is, Bill, it reads a visual function.
Joking aside, if we do this, then they're grandfathered in regardless of what comes, we decide to do in the future for an actual code.
Right. Yeah. And they're already looking for a variance, Larry, right, so I mean, obviously, this is what they want, they're not, you know, they don't feel pigeonholed, they provided us this proposal, this is what they want, they're looking for a variance to put these signs up. If we do change the ordinance, I don't feel as though they're going to be like, hey, we didn't know, they're already asking for a variance, so. But I think we can use this property to help guide us through the amended ordinance in the future, I don't want to hold them up very well, let's give them what they need. Let's vote on it, again.
Mr. Chairman, that's not a bad practice, that after so many you know, packages or variances have been approved throughout several years, then that basically becomes a policy similar to the highway identification sign, so at that point, it is appropriate to change the actual policy. So maybe this is the time, if that's what the commission thinks.
Yes, we could recommend if we vote on it and recommend consideration to change the code.
Right.
Include that in the motion, and I'll just take that back to staff and we'll, we'll get that done for you.
All right.
All right. Amending this motion?
Are we, I think we're, I think we just go with the motion.
Yeah. Well, I thought we were, I thought we were heading, yeah, just with the extra. Just the purpose of going back, trying to look at.
Is it relevant to do it on this variance application, Josh, or will staff be able to bring us something back without that note?
No, I would, I would just say if you're wanting to let the Road Ranger move forward while staff works on this, then just approve the motion as is, and staff will go back and draft the ordinance for you for your next, one of your next meeting or so.
And no consideration with the motion, keep, keep it separate.
Okay.
I will entertain a motion to recommend the approval of a variance of the Community Graphics Regulations to allow for wall signs in number and sizes at nineteen North six eighty-one U.S. Highway twenty as shown on the plans prepared by Doyle General Sign Contractors dated November twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Mr. McBride? Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Nay.
And I will entertain. Caught myself off-guard there. I will entertain a motion to authorize the chair to report the results of this evening's commission's final actions to the Village Board of Trustees.
I'll second.
I didn't want to hog them all. Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
No public comments this evening, I myself have no announcements, Mr. Ray, do you have any announcements for us?
I do not, I don't know of any pending work for the commission, other than, of course, this side of Jordans, we just, you all just discussed. So I don't think there's going to be a meeting necessary for your second meeting in June, but I'll keep Mr. Chairman updated.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did you all, did you all have enough time to review the materials this time around, I kind of sent that preliminary, all those documents ahead of time?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'll second it. Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Neal? Motion is adjourned at seven forty-six.